I would like to call the meeting to order at 5:32 PM. And I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? I have an additional announcement that that doesn't need to be. So first of all, I'd like to start with the signing of the orders. I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll. We have tonight, we've added the gross and the net amounts for the payroll because Sarah Buxton called that to our attention. So I think from now on, we're going to just have both. So the motion of approval payroll for November 10th, 2025 was for $14,322.79. That was the gross before tax, before taxes and other deductions. And so then the gross, the net is $10,310.1.
Why are you doing this, Betty Ann? Tell me what you're saying.
Richard, could you mute yourself, please?
It's another room, and for some reason, they go to that, okay?
Sarah, can you mute Richard Howe?
Yep, I just did.
Thank you. Okay. So then the other, the rest of that motion is that I'd like to also the signing of the orders for 11/6/25 for $454,141.41.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I'd like to move to approve the minutes from the Select Board meeting dated 10/28/25.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Announcements, Saturday, the 15th. Here at the town office, we're going to have the zoning rewrite public hearing from 9 to 12. And that is open to the public, going to be right here. And so we hope people will come and give their input. And next is business. We, we reviewed the park and ride policy. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was after business. Okay, we have public comment. I apologize. I thought that was after business. Does anybody have public comment? Okay, the sheriff has a public comment.
Real quick, the sheriff's office is doing a Thanksgiving food drive this year. I've started this program where every year I want to partner with one of the schools that in the towns that we cover and the food shelf in that town. So this is the first year I'm doing it. We're doing a current elementary school in Dandy. And we've identified three families that would like Thanksgiving, their baskets.
Okay.
So we're trying to put together three of them by the 21st. So if there's anybody who's interested in donating food, you can bring it down to the sheriff's office. Obviously not perishables, anything Thanksgiving related, you know, box stuffing, cans, corn, peas. You know, that awful cranberry sauce. We'll take, we'll take anything non-perishable that would, you know, you and your family eat on Thanksgiving. Only thing we don't worry about is the turkeys because the sheriff's office is fine with turkeys. And if anyone wants to make a monetary donation, that money will be given to the Dandy Food Shelf. So that way they can kind of keep their shelf stocks throughout the year. So again, if anyone's interested in donating any other money or food, do so, bring it to the sheriff's office.
Could we make it easier for people to drop it here and you could pick it up here?
Yeah, that'd be fine, too.
Okay, so donations, I think that would be, make more sense for Mendon residents and for us. So anybody wanting to donate towards these three families' baskets can drop food, non-perishable food off here at the Mendon Town Office.
Or money in an envelope.
Or money in an envelope and the sheriff, yeah, and the sheriff will pick it up.
And like I said, we're trying to make three baskets. So if you're able to, like three cans of corn or three boxes.
Absolutely. I'm going to the grocery store tomorrow morning, so.
Yeah, we can get that by the 21st.
By the 21st.
By the 21st, for anybody listening. Great.
Thanks, Ryder.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other announcement or public comments? Alrighty, I'm going to move forward into business. Last meeting, we reviewed the park and ride policy, but we made an adjustment to it, just adding that the sheriff could, that the sheriff would be able to enforce things after hours and, and during normal hours. It just were giving the sheriff the authority to enforce this policy at their discretion. So we did review it at the last meeting. So I'm just going to move that we approve it as we, as it was adjusted for this, for this meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And you were here when we discussed that last week, right? Okay. Okay. The town of Mendon sign permit for the recreation area replacement waived waiver fee. We're going to waive the fee for that town since it's a town sign. Do we need to make a motion on that, Sarah? Is that just?
Just to make things formal and to complete the files, like any other applicant, we will ask to waive the fees.
Not all people have an applicant. They just get a fucking permit if they want it.
Could you please mute Brian from the gates? Thank you. So I'm going to make a motion that we waive the fee request for the town of Mendon's recreation area sign replacement.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The health insurance as, Sarah, would it be okay, since Chris is here, if I just jump down and do, we talk about Chris's budget before we cover the health insurance?
Yep, as long as everybody else agrees to it.
It's okay, that way Chris won't have to stay during that conversation. Okay. Chris, thank you so much for your detailed memorandum regarding your budget. It was very helpful for me when I was reviewing, reviewing your budget. I, I was interested, a couple of things that I actually went back and looked at, but the equipment hire, the winter and summer equipment hire that you haven't used. I, I understand that you want to use that for tree, you know, tree removal. We talked about that last week, how many trees came down. Does it matter that it's divided up in the budget two different seasons? Does that just help you? Is that helpful or?
That's as it was.
As it was. Yeah, Sarah, what do you think? I mean, just to clean it up, that'd be one line.
Um, it's, it's, it's separated for winter and summer roads based on the agency of transportation. They have us report on our annual financial plan, what are winter expenses and summer expenses? And that's why those are split.
Okay.
And it's, it's why fuel is split separately and also repairs and supplies.
Well, and I think, you know, it's kind of timely, especially the conversation we had with Chris earlier in the week about the trees that came down. What'd you say? We lost 26 trees in that last windstorm? You cleaned up 30 trees in that last windstorm. And, and, you know, and like you said, you can't handle all of them with the equipment you have. You don't have a cherry picker, you don't have, yeah. I think Chris wants a cherry picker in the worst way.
We'll put that on the wish list.
But if we can get, let's one of the other neighboring towns buy one and then we can just borrow it.
Yeah, go in on one. And I have a question that is just curiosity of mine. What's the difference between using the sand versus, salt versus the other, where is it in here? That you said you had 3,000 gallon tank of the, yeah, what's the difference in that? Just out of curiosity.
Apparently, we are, Bill has had to buy the treated salt. So it already has that liquid chloride mixed in already. But we have the tank, we can use it for grading on certain roads. We can apply it, we do use it sparingly when it gets, well, sort of like 10 out of 30. There's some freezing rain going on right now. When you want to salt them up a little faster, to work a little quicker. But it's on there every year. And so my crew and I, we started November of 23rd.
Yeah.
And we use maybe 250 gallons. So I don't, it's not.
You're not going to be needing it again, yeah.
What's your, I'm sorry, but what is the budgeted amount? How many gallons? 5,000 gallons?
No.
5,000, oh, okay, yeah.
For the, for one purchase of it. The other difficulty with the liquid chloride is that it comes in a 5,000 gallon truck and they only deliver what they have. And we have a 3,000 gallon tank. So one of the things that Bill has previously had trouble with was he had a parcel of another town that needed to get chloride as well.
So here's the second page.
You can split it. My thought was, it didn't, with the rising cost of salt.
Yes.
Salt last year was $92 a ton. This year it's $112 a ton. And since we're not using at the same level the liquid chloride, if I just slid that, didn't have to more, but slid the liquid chloride into the salt, to sort of.
Yeah, and we can revisit it. And we can revisit it next year based on how much you use this winter, if we need to buy any. But it sounds to me like probably for the next several years, we'd be able to move that line item together. And I think that's a great idea because we did see the salt. I mean, that was a real red flag last year, how much the salt had gone up in it, you know, and we had to adjust our budget for that.
So this, that product is not, that product will last, correct? In the tanks? No problem, okay.
Yeah, we have to, we have to agitate it. We have a pump that cycles through. But yes.
Okay, good.
Doesn't have an expiration date, too.
Right.
Good. Yeah, I wondered about that also. I, I, and also I thought the idea, the thing about Robinwood, moving that $1,000. So this is on the fourth page, you guys. So the town amendment pays the town of Killington 4,000 every winter to, and the other 1,000 is for summer work done by Mendon's Highway Department. So he wants to request to move that $1,000 from Robinwood to the gravel budget line item, which makes total sense. And they, you're sure that Killington's not going to up their, well, we don't know what they charge us, but.
Don't give them any ideas, Megan.
The, the bigger thing is.
They got bigger fish to fry up there.
It was also easy to forget, not forget, but when you're looking at it and you look at Robinwood, 5,000.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can go do X, Y, and Z. But it's not 5,000, 1,000. And so what we're hauling up there is stone.
Yeah.
And so I just thought it would be less tracking for us if it simply just, if it's stone and we ought to do the work anyway, if we just put it in with the ground.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And then I did notice that you, the sign replacement, $1,500, you recommend leaving that where it is. We, I know we talked about looking at a couple of signs when we met last week on Town Line, but you thought you might even be able to clean them up. But that, what other signage is there that you are in charge of or that you take care of?
Well, we have the speed limit and these sort of traffic control signs. This also includes the signs that we have for grading, the old time.
Oh, yeah, sure.
We had to update our, our slow traffic turn signs that we put up when there is a funeral at, like St. Natalie Drive. Because it sets on corners and cars are trying to pull out of it.
But $1,500 is adequate for that?
It is, I paid attention.
Okay.
Exactly. Signs, yes, have gone up, but it's, last year we didn't order any signs. This year I ordered some speed limit signs, some curvy road signs, a blind driveway sign. And then a couple of road signs, I don't want some. Just to have more of a presence for people on the road, perhaps we have fewer close calls.
When I talked to Rod a couple of weeks ago, he had mentioned something, I think I mentioned, I think I mentioned that to you, Sarah, that he, his, one of his recommendations to us is that we consider putting a couple of signs in the areas where the, there are amended trails and just saying, keep your dog on a leash, you know, inciting our dog ordinance. So when I talked to Sarah about that, she said, well, you know, potentially if some of those areas are within the town highway or there are trails in the right of way, if there was budgeting for it, that, that may be where, where it would come out of, unless I was.
No, that would be, but are those areas state or town? The entrances to the hiking areas?
If they connect, intersect with our roads, then the right of way portion would be a good place to sign.
Do we maintain them like Brewers Corner says from that area? We don't maintain those park areas.
We plow them, but they clear out, you know, the trails.
Well, that's what I, that's what I mean though, the plowing. That's where it would put us, it would put us responsible for the signage, because that's where they would be.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's true, yeah, that was one spot. The other spot he mentioned was, ah, up there.
Tammerack notch.
Yes.
Way up there.
And there was another one behind, um, what's the mountain?
So then there's, the other one is the Canty Trail.
That's the one, the Canty Trail.
The Canty Trail, Bucklin Trail, Brewers Corners.
Yeah.
How many, are we talking four or five?
Yeah.
And they would cite our ordinance and it would say, fine, you know, I mean, I think that would make sense to maybe put something together and, and get them ordered. I think, I mean, we're having trouble with this.
Yeah.
So the, the sign budget for fiscal year 2026 has been spent. Yeah, it, this is fiscal year 26 that we're in right now. That budget, Chris has spent the budget for the sign budget so far. So we would look for alternative.
For public safety, it could come out of public safety.
Yeah.
And it would, we'd do it, wouldn't do it probably till the spring because it's too.
I mean, they not have to do all the areas, you know, like if we can only afford one or two this year and like one or two.
Well, let's, Sarah, if you could put together what that sign would say and have Chris get an estimate for what it would cost and then we could, you know, but I still don't think we would do it till the spring, just because winter seems to be upon us.
Yes.
And not as many people are walking their dogs in the winter. Chris, I had no other questions about your budget. I thought it was really clean. I, I appreciate that you've put in your recommendations for, for salary and we're going to be working through that for salaries. And, you know, I just really, you know, appreciate the work you put into this. And Sarah, do you have any questions?
What, what goes into the field maintenance budget?
So.
That's the reserve fund for 1,200 bucks.
Yes, so we dedicate a mower to the director.
Oh, literally, yes.
So everything to maintain that, plus grass seed, any type of work that we have to do down there, that kind of, it goes to that.
Okay. And the bridge in Culver, you're keeping the funding where that is? You feel that's sufficient? We've got what we need around track for down low repairs?
We're on, we're on track. It's easy to say that, that it would be awesome to increase the culvert. So here's the thing, so last summer, culverts were right around $31 a foot for the 24 inch by 20 foot. So that, that put them around 600, I was wrong on that. They were around $641. This year they're 891 that we put in. You saw the ones on the other bill that we did. We, we did one on Bright Road. We have a bunch more coming up in, in the next season when we get there. So we are mindful of what the budget is. We're also trying to do more in the way of identifying if there's a spot that has one, one section with, you know, two culverts within one section or a grouping, that that's, trying to, to try to fill that in due to the length portion of it that we can. But at the same time, we've, we've been selective, we've been careful. Can we dig it out? Can we clean it up? Can we patch it? So that we can get to the next season without completely spending through there.
And if you, and if you have money in the budget that you haven't spent on that, is, are you able to buy the culvert and store it for future you, for future years? So one year it doesn't, you know, bounce up, especially as prices are going up. And, okay, I've just never seen, I've never seen one just sitting there without being in the ground. So come over and see it.
And I just acknowledge the vehicle maintenance fund. I think that was noted before. Like that's going to go up because of the strategic decisions that.
Yes.
We've been making about, so that, that, is that more, that is more than last year, right? And I think I saw that in one of the notes, but that's why. Oh, it's the same as last year, okay.
So we increased it last year, correct?
Because if it was 30, and I requested 56, just in the fact that we had spent 33 the previous year. This year we're, we're at about, we're almost clocking in at 40. The scheduled maintenance for, because it involves revenue. It's the, the loader backup, that covers the regular, the, the three big trucks. And so.
When do you get the other truck?
The F600 is scheduled for its build sometime after Thanksgiving. So we were surprised, like we lost a bunch of people. That doesn't push anything back. It is partially why I made the request that until we've had a full season with the 600 on the road, be allowed to keep the 500, even if it meant losing the 150.
Yeah.
To be able, right now, if one went down, one truck without a fire, we wouldn't have a safety net. Not that you can play on the what if all the time, you know, but it is nice to have that safety net. I understand not having a fleet, I understand, you know, the operation, but the odds of the 600 coming back and working awesome from the start, possible. But just to get a season, so if it does have something wrong.
Work the bugs out of it.
We can, we still have something to plow.
Yeah. And you have space for other vehicles? Okay.
We cleaned up the old sand shed. It's fully functional.
Great. Well, and you guys are, I saw your chart going up today towards Robinwood. That was you guys, wasn't it? Yeah, I was at Pico and I looked and I go, oh, there they go. Yeah. So we ready for winter?
Yeah. We, we're ready.
Good.
Ready as we can.
Good. Well, do you have any questions about the budget?
No, so we're gonna, are we gonna, are we going to move to?
No, we're just gonna, we're just getting, yeah, because Sarah, Sarah's putting the draft budget, she's put these numbers in that Chris has recommended or in the draft budget. So unless we were going to change something and we, it's just more of a discussion with Chris. But, you know, I just, what a difference a year makes, that you have all this experience under your belt and you know so much about your budget, which is so great. So I think we're all done with you. Go home to your family or unless you have questions for us.
Well, I'll do two things.
Okay.
The one, the one would be, if we circle back to the liquid chloride.
Yeah.
If we find that the treated salt just becomes so astronomical and we decide to go back to the non-treated salt, we have the tank up that can be loaded out of the freight line, which puts the salt on the roads. So we could go to the untreated if we found that that price became too elevated, right? Because then we'd be spraying while we're putting the salt down.
Okay.
More is the liquid chloride. So we could, that, we can also be flexible with that. It doesn't need to be.
Yeah.
Trying to keep as much as what, of what build it in place because it worked for so long. There is that. As far as going home, everybody should drive safe. I'm not going home this time driving the roads of Mendon to see if we need to put any salt or anything down to building above the cars that I left in project.
Great. So thank you. Yes, I'm very fortunate that I drive home is pretty easy because yours, Sarah, different story. Thank you.
So just to, just to elaborate on the infrastructure budget, we will have the reserve fund timelines for you to review for the next meeting. So if you, if that prompts any further questions for Chris, we can bring them back in.
Okay. All right, well, safe travels tonight. I don't think I'm going to be doing my ride along tonight, but I'll be doing it soon, okay?
Fun.
Thank you.
Yeah, see you here.
See ya. Okay. Well, how about Sarah, think about a year ago. I didn't know anything about Fen and Islands, so. It's been, it's much better this year. Okay. The public safety budget, Leamy was not available to come this evening and he's not in two weeks from now. So I'm going to just try to grab him, to meet with him at his convenience. Because we do, I think you saw his message. And I think we have some decisions to make about the vehicle and, and so I'm gonna, if you guys are okay with it, I'm going to have a meeting with him and then I will reply, we'll report back.
Yeah.
Before the end of the year.
One thing that I'm curious about, just as you have feedback to talk with him about, is, you know, this occurs to me, we do contract with the sheriff more than, you know, any other town.
Yeah.
And I looked on the BLCT document that Sarah had given us and it had, it even has like which towns, you know, elect or appoint constables and which have, you know, given up their police powers and things like that. And I noted that we have $1,500 for our constable. I'm not suggesting that we cut or make changes, but I'm curious to know, like, if we think about, you know, 1,500 or some amount of money for an animal control officer, you know, how much work are we asking people to do? And if the constable's duties according to their job description are currently all being fulfilled by, you know, paid law enforcement, I, I wonder if maybe we should think about, you know, how we're using a constable and what that means going forward.
Yeah, and that is, and we have also discussed the animal control.
Yeah.
And then we have, we have some, someone interested and we would, we had discussed bringing that up to the 1,200 dollars, to be the $100 a month. But I agree, and the constable, you know, again, the car, the, it's just, last year I had the conversation and I really didn't have my legs under me quite enough last year to really have a good conversation about it. And I think we've got the vehicle should, and we were having a discussion earlier today, if that vehicle were here, Greg could use it to go, it's four-wheel drive. He could use it instead of his car, the staff can use it.
Chris could use it even in situations like he was just speaking of.
Yeah, so, and.
Yeah, it's a lot.
And we just have to dismantle the public safety part of the vehicle, the lights, the computer, and maybe even, you know, the computer could be given or donated to another town or the sheriff, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm ready to go with that conversation. I just, last year I had, I met with Leamy, but I was just overall.
Yeah, and I would, I certainly am glad that you've got the year under your belt because I don't know how, I don't have enough information. I just was looking at like the duties and thinking about that and what other towns do for, for doing it.
Well, and I think, you know, a year ago, we didn't have a, a solid dedicated sheriff situation like we do now. And, you know, I feel, you know, he's dedicated to our town. And so I think it's, and I don't, you know, there's, I don't think there's anywhere in the world from Mendon, for better for worse, will ever have its own police force, have its own constable. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, after looking into it.
Yeah. Yeah, and Seth, you know, last year brought that up and, and I looked into it a lot because, you know, we do all remember when that car drove around Mendon and made us feel, but now I feel sheriff has such a good presence in the town and um, I just feel like our public safety is being addressed. Um, okay, so I am going to move the um, under, yes?
Well, before you go into the final part of the budget presentation, you might want to go back up to health insurance that we skipped over.
Oh, that's right. So Sarah, my, I mean, I reviewed what you gave us. I think what we are doing, it makes sense. I think the employees, I think it's a good policy and I think, so I would like to move that we just stick with what you presented for the budget. If that, does that need to be made into a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve the recommendation.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation for the insurance, for the town insurance policy for the upcoming budget year.
I'll second it, but I have a question back there, Lee.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Um, and then I'm going to put the detail of that proposal in the minutes, so it'll be, yeah.
But Sarah has a couple of questions.
Sarah, on the, the handout that you provided that said Mendon Health Insurance 2026, um, and it just gave a bunch of bullet points, it says that the town is willing to contribute to the HSA, did you mean an HRA?
No, it's an HSA, so um, the health savings. I'm sorry?
It is an HSA eligible plan then.
Right, it has to be the high deductible plan with VLCT, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then the town offers the buyout at 40%?
Yeah.
That's just been there for a long time, 40%?
It's been there for three or four years, I think, right?
I think that's great. I just, I just don't know how long we've been doing that for.
Yeah, I think that was two, two or three budgets ago.
Yeah, we currently have three employees taking advantage of that too, reducing our overall cost.
Yep. And when they do the buyout, is that like, um, is that considered taxable wages, like an increase to their wages? Okay.
It is taxable, um, and I, I mean, the employees use it to go pay for the insurance they're getting elsewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I've been doing a little research on my own for other things and I didn't know if we had another mechanism other than the taxable route, but I think that's just what it is, so, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm, that's great. That's all the questions I had.
Okay, so um, for moving into, I'm going to move that we go into, under VSA 313-1-3, that we go into executive session to discuss the employee evaluations.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So.
Okay, so I need to create a pop out room. Hold on a second.
And since no one's here, we'll stay where we are.
Um, nobody is in the, physically in the building?
Yeah, just the sheriff.
Okay.
But we, you know, we could go into the other office, but, you know, I think if the sheriff leaves the room, we'll be fine.
I, I still have to do a pop out room on the computer though, or else, or unless you are going to go into a different room in the building.
We'll just stay here.
We're going to stay here if that's okay, but I don't understand why a pop out.
Because Carol Gates is still online and so am I, so I, you know, we would remove our, you, you would go into a separate.
Okay.
Um.
I said enough, we could just shut the computer, but probably better to just.
Um, you can, yeah, no, you can do that, you can mute.
So yeah, why don't we just mute and turn off the camera?
Yeah, you can do that. And then when, I'll text you when we're ready to come back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be here, so I'm going to be doing some work.
Okay.
You can just unmute yourself.
This conference will now be recorded.
And you're going to move to come out of executive session.
I'm going to move to come out of executive session.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, based on our discussions of the evaluations for the whole town um, staff, we will be making recommendations for the draft of the budget for increases moving forward.
Okay.
Okay, so um, with that said, I'm going to move that we adjourn the select board meeting at 6:35 PM.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.